...saying hello to my grandson Cody who is watching Channel 21 tonight. Okay, well, tonight we're going to have a flag ceremony performed by the Brownies Troop 41-938 and I think Troop 5614. And by the way, we also have a Boy Scout Troop 509 in the audience. Welcome, everybody. Are the Brownies ready to perform the ceremony?
Yes.
Okay, proceed.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors.
Color guard attention.
Uh oh, he can't get through the door. Flags are bigger than nails.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be thyself and see my country to thee.
My country is of thee, steep and of liberty, and thee art seen. Land where my fathers died, and all the pilgrims went down every mountainside, and free young men.
Color guard, host of the colors.
Two. Color guard descent.
Thank you very much, Brownies. Next is public comment, which is an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of recognized community organization. And later, we're going to have a study session, again, on the Shoreline Master Program, and at that point, we'll take comments on the Shoreline Master Program. So I see most of them are with regard to that. We'll take that later. Girl Scout Troop 50614, the Brownie Troop 50614, are you going to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, you can come up to the rostrum here.
You can turn to speaker?
Yep.
Oh, you can...
Lower it.
Lower it.
My name is Cynthia, and I think that we should put sidewalks around the new school because then kids who walk to school or somewhere else can be safer walking. People who need to turn their car around a corner can most likely hit someone, and they would die without the sidewalk. So I wish the construction workers would build a sidewalk for kids to walk on their way to school.
Thank you.
My name is Mathise, and I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to school, to the new school. I am scared to walk along that road to the new school.
My name is Abby. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we will be safe walking to the new school. I am scared of walking along that road to the new school.
My name is McKenna. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Abigail. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Emmy. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Savannah. I want sidewalks along 20...wait, what is this? 212th Avenue Southeast so we can be safe walking to the new school.
Hello, my name is Cindy. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
Hello, my name is Neha. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Samantha. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Kaylin. I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school.
My name is Daniela, and I want sidewalks along 212th Avenue Southeast so we are safe walking to the new school. I am scared to walk along that road to the new school.
My name is Carol Stamper, and I am the Girl Scout Troop Leader of Troop 50614. And we were working on a community service badge, and it said, "Find something in your neighborhood that will affect you and come to the city hall and city council and let them know." So we all wrote letters to the mayor, and they're taking it one step farther by coming here. Many of these girls, half the troop, will have to walk to school on that road with no sidewalks when the new school opens in 2010, so we hope you will consider putting in sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, can you speak to that a little bit?
I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you for coming over here. It's wonderful to see you, and it was probably the best flag ceremony that I saw here ever since we've been incorporated, so we would love to have you come over here every night, every Tuesday night, not every night. The sidewalks on 212th, the council already authorized funds in 2008 budget and carried over to 2009, a small portion. This is between the new park and then the corner off, I want to say, the Southeast 30th. But we have a six-year transportation plan that proposed to do sidewalks. I don't have the specific schedule in my mind right now, but I'll bring back at the next council meeting and give you a report. And we also got the contact information. I'll probably follow up with an email or letter as well. Again, thank you for coming. Appreciate for the input.
Thank you very much. Next is Claire Peterski. Faith in Action.
Good evening. I'm Claire Peterski. I'm the Executive Director of Faith in Action, Supporting Senior Independence. Our offices are in the basement of Mary Queen of Peace now at 1121 228th Avenue Southeast in Sumamish. I want here to thank the City of Sumamish for continuing its support of Faith in Action. We recently received our contract for the next two years, and we very much appreciate the ongoing support of the city. When I fill out my quarterly reports, I get the opportunity to provide the city with a great deal of statistics about our work, and today I just wanted to share maybe a more human story. We have a new client from the City of Sumamish. Her husband just passed away last summer, so she's living alone. She has cancer. She walks with a cane. She's having difficulty getting things done like her shopping. Her mobility issues make it difficult for her to now maintain her yard, maintain her home, and she contacted Faith in Action. What we were able to do is match her up with a whole family that's interested in volunteering, also a Sumamish family of relatively recent immigrants to this country, so I think that this story kind of typifies the spirit of this community that we have, somebody who is in need and a family willing to step forward together to help. You know, the teenagers are going to be trimming those trees, while mom's going to be vacuuming the carpet, and dad will take her to the grocery store. I mean, it's just a really wonderful thing, and this is the kind of work that when you provide us with grant money, we are able to find these volunteers and match families and individuals with our seniors. So I want to say thank you. And just on a personal note, as a regular bike commuter to work, I also want to advocate for both bike lanes and that sidewalk on 212th, so yay, you know, Brownie Troop. I very much support that, too. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have approval agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, our student liaison reports and...
They're on vacation this week.
Oh, they're on vacation. Okay. Presentations, proclamations, nothing today?
There's none.
So next is the consent agenda. Any of the items on the agenda wish to be removed and discussed? No? So as the consent agenda is presented, payroll in the amount of $246,800, ending January 31st of 2009. Approval of the claims for a period of February 12th, 2009, in the amount of $1,421,700. Approval of parks vehicle purchase, and that's two Dodge pickups to replace leased trucks that we've been paying more than we should be paying for. Approval of public works vehicle replacement, that's one Ford F-350. And also, there's the amendment to the town center contract with makers to include Plan 2009-2010 activity. Hearing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. There are no public hearings, no unfinished business, so we go to new business. And new business is item number five in your books. And that's a resolution formalizing the city's intent to request transfer of the private roadway easement that is 248th Avenue Southeast between Southeast 14th and Southeast 17th Streets to the city for use as a public right-of-way and to improve this section of 248th Avenue Southeast for public use.
Yes.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is a project that the council talk about at the city council retreat and ask us to come before you with a resolution specifying the council's intent. I have a public works director here, John Cunningham. He's ready to give you a report that includes the background and perhaps some nice pictures showing what street that we're talking about. John?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As the city manager indicated, this is an item that we had some discussion on at our recent retreat, recent council retreat. It's also an item that has been on the table in one form or another for quite some time. Back in the, towards the end of this past summer, we began working with residents to try to acquire the easement that, this is actually currently a private easement, to acquire the easement so that we could improve the roadway, make it a public roadway, and open it up for public use. So tonight, as the city manager indicated, we're here with the resolution for your consideration that, at least from the staff's perspective, we think mirrors the discussion that we had Thank you. So this is just a sort of an area map that shows you the area that we're talking about, and I'll use the pointer here to indicate on the screen for the viewing audience, the members of the public here. This is 248th, right in the middle of the picture, 248th running north and south. Down at the bottom, the street running across the bottom, Southeast 24th. And then at the northern end, 248th turns into Windsor Boulevard and goes out to Southeast 8th and 244th. Southeast 14th Street is at the northern end of the area we're talking about, and Southeast 17th Street is at the southern end. So there's, in this area, there's eight parcels of property. They're owned by seven different owners. The shaded area shows you the properties that we have, where we've been able to work with the current owners and have secured the transfer of the easement to the city. And that represents six of the eight parcels, five of the seven owners. This is just a bit larger picture that shows just the area that we're dealing with. Again, right at the very, at the very top is Southeast 14th Street. Southeast 14th, or excuse me, 248th, north of this is improved through what used to be, or what originally was platted as the Moravan and McClure subdivisions on either side of 248th. Again, down at the bottom, Southeast 14th. And then the area in between 248th is the private area. Again, you see the shading of the parcels where we've secured the deed transfer and the easement has been transferred to the city. And the city now, you can kind of see a light purple, that's the area of the easement that the city currently has as right-of-way. And then this area along, these two parcels on the west side of the street are the two parcels that we have not secured the transfer yet. This is a picture of 248th showing the gate that was erected along the private roadway at the northern end to help deter traffic from using the private roadway. That's looking to the south. This is a picture of the roadway. You might recall that we did some grading of the roadway last week. This shows a little bit of that, on the left-hand side of the screen as you look at it, is the area that was graded. This is looking south again. And on the right-hand side, you can see the potholes that are there. That's in the area that is adjacent to the two parcels that we have not secured the easement transfer from yet. We graded along the side of the roadway where we have secured the easement transfer. This is a drawing that shows the interim improvements that staff is recommending that we make to this roadway once we take it over. Basically, what we're proposing is on the east side of the street, we'd have about a two-foot gravel shoulder. Then we'd have roughly a 22-foot wide paved traveling surface for the vehicles. That would be striped to two 10-foot wide travel lanes, one in each direction. We'd have six inches of curb on the west side of the street, sort of an extruded curbing to separate the travelway for the vehicles with a paved shoulder for the pedestrians. We hope to be able to get a six-to-seven-foot paved shoulder for pedestrians. And then in working with the neighbors, they've requested a six-to-seven-foot soft-surface trail type of shoulder for equestrian use. So that's the, basically, the improvement we're talking about at this point from an interim standpoint. This would be done as soon as we're able to secure the rest of the easement or we make the decision to go ahead and improve the roadway. There's a little bit of discussion going on right now about perhaps shifting the paved shoulder for pedestrians to the east side of the street, separating it from the equestrian trail. And that would, what that would accomplish is the pedestrians then would have, all along the east side of 248th, from Southeast 24th Street, all the way up to the Hazel Wolf wetland, the sort of the headworks of the trail there, they'd be able, pedestrians would be able to walk all along the east side and would not have to cross the street, would not have to cross 248th to get to the Hazel Wolf area. So this is generally what the roadway would look like, but there might be some changes to that that would, again, move maybe the paved shoulder over to the east side of the street rather than on the west side of the street. We've also, would be putting in streetlights. There's three or four existing power poles along the east side of the street. We would be putting streetlights on those and moving forward with that. There's also been a request that we do some sort of a separation of the equestrian trail, some type of a fence or something to separate the equestrian trail from the travelway. We're looking into that. We haven't quite decided exactly how we might be able to do that, but that could be a portion of the project that we would add also. Again, these would be the interim improvements to 248th. The ultimate improvements to 248th Avenue in this area would be done as the property along this stretch of 248th develops. So the developers would be responsible for installing curb, gutter, sidewalk, the center median, those types of improvements that would be the ultimate improvements. Eventually, this section of 248th Avenue would look just like the section between the Moravan and the McClure subdivisions to the north. So that's, I guess, basically the staff report. Again, what the resolution does, it asks you to formalize your intent, that the city take this over, and that we do this interim improvement as soon as we can, as soon as we can get it done.
Good. Thank you very much. Kathy and then Nancy.
And then Michelle.
Michelle.
John, these interim improvements, how long would they last? Just to guess.
My guess is it's going to be in the two-to-five-year timeframe. There has been, in the past, a subdivision that was in the works on the west side of the street. Because of the slowdown in the housing market, that subdivision is now on hold. But I think as soon as the housing market picks up again, there'll be a lot of interest to move forward with some of the plating in this particular area. So I would guess in the two-to-five-year timeframe.
And if the housing slowdown is longer than most of us anticipate, would you just be able to repave it, to keep it, you know, continue that in that temporary condition, or how would you?
Yeah, I think from a traffic standpoint, the traffic, our traffic model indicates that once the street is opened, even with the 244th connection completed, that there'll be around 700 vehicles per day on 248th in this area. Ultimately, at build-out, there's about 4,400 vehicles planned. So I think with only 700 vehicles planned for the very foreseeable future, from a traffic standpoint, this section that we would put in on an interim basis would last for, you know, for quite a while. So it could last easily 10 years from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Nancy?
You mentioned it would go to what used to be called the Moravan development. It would be similar in the long-term build-up. Do those have equestrian trails also?
There is one on the west side of the street, which is why this, why we're proposing on the west side of the street to have the equestrian trail.
And is there any separation between that and what's next to it? Is it a...
The sidewalk is next to it in that case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any fencing or anything separating that there?
No. But in that, in that particular section, there's curb, there's a bike lane, there's curb and gutter, there's the planter strip between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, and then there's a sidewalk, and then there's the equestrian trail.
Horses can be really skittish. I mean, riding them alongside a busy road section could be a challenge and a safety concern if you didn't have some separation. I, now, in looking at what we've got here in terms of easement, we're looking at, what, 38 feet? Is that all we're working with? But the easement that we're taking over is a full 60 feet or...
That's correct. Yeah, the easement is 30 feet on either side of the center line of 248th Avenue. So the total width of the easement is 60 feet wide.
Okay. And so is this road, because the road, coming in from Norris Estate, they shifted it over, right?
Correct.
And then does it shift, it shifts back in the middle?
Correct.
Okay. So going down, the road shifts right down here where you see the red sign, it shifts to the left again, right?
That's, yes. In this picture, we're looking to the south, and as you go south on the road, at Southeast 14th, it's basically centered on the easement, on the right, on the center line of the right-of-way. And as you go to the south, it begins to shift to the east a little bit in order to match up with the improvements that are down at Southeast 17th Street already.
Well, I know this stretch of road. I've ridden this and walked this stretch of road many times, and I would go with the recommendation to keep the pedestrians all on the same side, which would be on the east side, and put the equestrians on the west side so that they have a straight run and the pedestrians have a straight run. And they, I mean, pedestrians can walk on the soft surface if they want. I don't think that precludes them. But I would, I would favor, since the road is flat and there is no, there is going to be no curb and gutter, that there be some kind of little fence or something. Like, I know along Main Street on the way to the Plateau Golf and Country Club, they just did the, you know, the little split-rail fence thing.
Okay, we'll take a look at that one.
Something. It's just, you know, if a horse is frightened, it's not going to keep them, but it provides a visual barrier as well, I think, for safety. So I would, I would be in favor of that. And then where does the stop signs go? The stop sign is going to go, there won't be a stop sign going north-south, it'll only be from the traffic coming into the roadway?
That's correct. There'll be, on Southeast 14th, there'll be stop signs as both sides of Southeast 14th approach 248th Avenue. And then at Southeast 17th, which only goes to the east, there'll be a stop sign at, on Southeast 17th as it approaches Southeast 48th.
Now, in your write-up, you also mentioned that Cam West is responsible for creating the traffic circle at the top of the picture here at Southeast 14th. What's the schedule for that?
Basically, what Cam West is waiting for right now is for the city to move ahead, for the city to acquire the easement, because when the, when the traffic circle goes in at that location, they have to widen out around the traffic circle for the, for the traffic. And so they need the area that we're acquiring or that we're having transferred to the city by deed to become right-of-way.
So that could move forward because that, those two pieces have already been secured, the easement?
Right. They will, they will do that as part, perhaps in conjunction with our improvement. So that, that'll be able to go forward very, very quickly once, once this is all ready to go. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, all the, all the plans have been approved for that. It's been through the engineering here at the city, and it's got approval to go. So it's just a matter of coordinating all the construction, and that'll move forward, too.
Now, I saw Mr. McGraw's email today with his sort of detailing his, you know, how he's going to, willing to let us go forward, and none of that seemed unreasonable to me except they have to transfer it in order for their, their legal description to get changed, right? And things that he wants. Can you explain the process? I don't understand. What comes first? It sounds like they want us to do that first, but they have to transfer it before we can change the legal description of their property.
Yeah, they actually, they are, they sort of both, it's almost a chicken and an egg kind of thing. Once the transfer is done, they, the McGraws and the Millers, which are the owners of the two parcels that, that still have, have yet to transfer the easement to us, basically their legal description gets changed. It's, it's the legal description of their property as it exists today, less the easterly 30 feet of that property. So it's a very simple, easy-to-write legal description. It just takes the legal that's on their title today and accepts out the easterly 30 feet of that, of that description.
And we have assumed that responsibility to do this for all the people that have given us the easement, or how does that work?
Actually, for all of the rest, we have not written a new legal description. The...
How does that...
Mr. City Attorney.
There's no legal requirement that a legal description be prepared. Legal description is not something that the city does. It's only when property is transferred or developed that a legal description is required, and that's the responsibility of the property owner. The action that the city's taking really doesn't affect the legal description other than in the sense that John indicated, that, you know, it's minus the X number of feet. So there's nothing in statute or otherwise that would require any need for a new legal description.
So when they transfer the... So, when they transfer the, the easement to us, and then at some point in the future, should they sell their property or, or somehow transfer their property to someone else, at that point in time, when the, when the legal description knew, there would be a new legal description written as part of the title, uh, search, title report process, and that's when their new legal would, legal description would, would be written as part of that title insurance process, when the property changes hands.
Nancy?
When, uh, somebody's had their property surveyed and there's a corner marker that is subject to a road take, and, um, the city then paves over it, uh, do they have any obligation to reestablish the corners, the new corners?
Yes. If there, if there are, uh, property corners out there that are established, then, then, in this case, with, with the city taking over the ri, the right-of-way, uh, I would think it's our responsibility to reset those property corners. Uh, I'd be surprised if there's any existing out in the middle of, uh, 248th at this point in time unless they're buried, because that roadway's been, a private roadway's been graded numerous times over the course of time. So, um, I'd be surprised if there are any remaining out there.
Have we, are we, have we marked the, the width of the easement?
We have not done that yet. Um, I'm in the process of hiring a, a surveyor to do that for us so that when we go in and do our improvements, we know that we're doing our improvements within the, the 60-foot, uh, right-of-way that we'll have. That has not been done yet, but should be done late this week or next week.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, I have, uh, one, uh, perhaps confirmation from you as to what my understanding, um, how this process started, and then I would have a follow-up question for you. It's been so long, there's so many items that we're working on, so that would help me to refresh my memory. Correct me if I'm wrong, that the 248th Avenue is a private road currently, and then the homeowners approached the city council that they did not wanna maintain this thing because it's being used more than the people are paying for the maintenance of it. Others are utilizing this road. That's triggered the process for council to look into it and then, uh, authorize funds to basically say, "Let's fix this problem." This is, the road is being used more than the few people are contributing for the maintenance of it, that we need to take it over. That's-
That's a correct recollection.
Okay. So, now, the traffic numbers that you quoted, 700 vehicles per day, and that's initial, initially when we built the RIS, uh, road, and then the ultimate build-out traffic number is 4,400. So, first, ultimate build-out, define that to us. What does that mean? Is that all the existing vacant lots are developed, including the town center, based on the current city council authorized zoning? And then, that's the ultimate build-out? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's correct. And the town center, um, in the traffic model, the town center is the expanded town center, uh, densities that the council, that the council approved that are, that's, that are going through the process now, uh, in terms of, of the land use designation, et cetera.
And that timeframe is about 2030, 34?
About 2030 is, is sort of when we estimate, yeah.
That range. Give us a sense of understanding in terms of traffic volumes. 4,400 vehicles, we have streets right now currently, I understand. How is that compared to this? How many streets that you have in this city carry same or less number of vehicles?
Okay. I'm glad you asked that question.
I didn't know you were prepared.
Uh, this is a list, and actually, this was easy to prepare because that's a question that, uh, that, that some of the public that has been interested in this whole process has asked. So, uh, listed on the screen are a number of the, the streets in the city that have traffic volumes currently in the 2002 to 2006 timeframe. Uh, these are actual, uh, actual, uh, volumes to the nearest 100, uh, vehicles per day and their actual counts out in the field. So, uh, you can see here, 212th Avenue, south of Southeast 32nd Street, uh, that's the third or fourth one down, is 3,800 vehicles per day currently. Uh, 244th Avenue, south of, just south of, uh, SR 202 is 3,400 vehicles per day, uh, today. Northeast 8th Street, east of, uh, 228th Avenue is 500 and, or 5,000, 500 vehicles per day, uh, today. Uh, Southeast 8th Street, east of 228th is 8,800 vehicles per day. So, that gives you an idea of, of some of the streets and, and roughly what 4,400 vehicles per day would look like in terms of a comparative street.
Okay. And I'm not gonna ask you for 770 numbers because I'm sure that-
Closest I have is the Southeast 4th at 900.
Probably every street in the city except the Dead End Coliseum would probably have that number. And one final question, and thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Mayor. Um, is it fair for me to assume that, um, the legal description of each one of these parcels had some language in their title similar to, what I want, upon the county's request or the city's request, this, this particular, oh, there it is, you were not there.
You'd think we scripted this. We didn't, actually.
Okay.
Um, this is, what, what you have on the screen right now is the actual deed that created this easement, this private roadway easement back in 1959.
Okay.
Uh, at that point in time, there was one owner that owned a, a large, uh, a large piece of property in this area, and that owner was beginning to subdivide and sell off that property. As part of that process, they created the private roadway easement, and the language that's specific to the deeding of it to the city is the language that you see, uh, highlighted in the box there. The grantors, that's the, the owners of the land at that point in time when the easement was created, hereby covenant and agree that the easement hereby granted shall be perpetual, shall be binding upon their heirs and assigns forever, and agree to convey said property by deed to King County. The city of Samamish is the successor to King County, so that applies to us at such time as King County, Samamish, is willing to accept said road. So, that's the language in the easement document, the original easement document, that, uh, is the legal language that gives the city the right to ask for and, and then accept, uh, the transfer of the, of the easement to the city as right-of-way, and then for us to take it over as a public roadway.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mark and then Michelle.
Uh, my question, I, I guess is either for John or for our city attorney. Um, we have this letter, um, you know, from Mr. McGraw, uh, suggesting asking or requesting different things. Are there some of these items that, uh, in the city attorney's, uh, mind, we should include in our decision? It looks from the language that I see here in the easement that, uh, really, we should just decide whether or not we want to ta, take the road at this time. If the city were to, uh, grant, uh, the two individuals who have not signed the deed over, uh, the deed of easement over to the city, any favors, if you will, uh, you would be treating them differently than the other property owners. From a legal standpoint, the language is mandatory and quite clear. There really is no legal basis for anyone to object to transferring the property upon request of the city. And therefore, in terms of whether there's any obligation to do anything on the two property owners' behalf, the answer is no. On the other hand, if council for appropriate reasons believes that something should be done, I think that all the property owners along the right-of-way should be treated in the same fashion. Having said that, I don't recommend doing so, but I'm not an elected official and I don't get to make that decision. Thank you for that.
My question had to do with the, um, numbers that you had for 210. Did that include the opening of 244th?
Yes. That, that does make the assumption that 244th Avenue is connected between Northeast 3rd and Northeast 8th Street across the wetland, the project that we're about to embark on hopefully in another month or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy?
We do something, if somebody's already obligated to act, I guess this is for Bruce. If, if somebody is already obligated to act, for example, under a covenant in their deed, for example, to grant access to the city, uh, if we went and started doing things that have any significant value or cost, would that be regarded as possibly as a gift of public credit or funds?
There's that potential. Uh, I could come up with various scenarios or theories that might, uh, sidestep that question, but in general, in the absence of some type of consideration, you are correct. Uh, doing something, uh, sort of for free would be a violation of the state constitution.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions for staff at this point, I would entertain comments from the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this resolution before we deliberate on it? Yes, please. State your name and address in three minutes.
Jim McGraw. Uh, you've been looking at my property, 248, 1525. Um, basically, we asked for some pretty simple things. We didn't ask for the money that the city had to pay the county when they took over portions of the easement in the past. You know, they paid for, in front of the board of property, the city owns that property. When they transferred it from the ci, from the county to the city, the city paid them for that, um, property. Um, not a lot of money, we're not asking for it. We're, but, you know, maybe we should be getting a gift, uh, deduction, but let's just keep it simple. Other precedents that have taken place on 14th, somebody did the same thing. That property was also paid for when it was transferred from the King County to, um, the city of Samamish. So, there's a precedent for paying for the property, and we're really not asking for that. I mean, I actually would ask you not to go through with the project till you're ready to build it out completely, which doesn't seem to be likely for a long time. Uh, so it can be done in a calm way. If that's not gonna happen, at least make it safe for everybody else. Um, I think that just because other people, when you send them a letter and threaten to sue them, signed a piece of paper, doesn't mean that the city shouldn't stand up and take care of them too. But I'm not going to, you know, fight somebody else's battles on that. But just because somebody else didn't, you know, asked for their rights, like, the ci, they signed over their rights to their property to the city, and the city has yet to register those rights, hasn't filed them, and they're in limbo. I mean, basically. And those are the types of things we're asking about. So, um, we wanna, and from very beginning when we talked, I did, did, uh, mention that I thought that, that was necessary. I've never transferred a piece of property without both parties signing. So, uh, and I also objected before you met on this without letting, you know, when they said the neighbors came in and said they wanted to take over this road, nobody actually contacted us that, you know, and, you know, that was neighbors, some of them quarter-mile away, some of them more, some of them miles away. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's fine. If the city's gonna move forward on it, we put forward a pretty simple, um, short list that isn't really demanding. Like, we wanna be good neighbors and be able to know where the property line is, so you don't encroach on us and we don't encroach on you because we're gonna have to build a fence to protect ourselves from the encroachment from all the people going down. We realize we're gonna have to pay for that. We're not asking the city to pay for that. Or, or maybe, can, can you please pay for that? Okay, I know it's not gonna happen. But, um, you know, so, we need to know where the property line is. The center marks true, they probably were destroyed by Puget, uh, Puget Sun Energy when they came through and put that, uh, small pipeline down the road. Um, they used to be there. I've seen them myself. Um, so, you know, right now, it's kind of a vague area, and we wanna make sure that we can protect our property from other people. We can protect other people from our property. It's a working, you know, it's a, it's a small farm, and we need to be able to build a fence that the, that, under state law, is legal to keep animals in so that we're don't, aren't under liability and things like that. So, we're asking for property delineation. We're asking for a clear transfer when it actually does happen. We're not asking for the payment that other parcels have been paid for, um, although I think that would be fair, but I realistically don't expect that that will happen. And, um, I also would, I know, I'm not supposed to tweet people, but I was just reading the, you know, I, I mean, how many years ago I came down here, the first time this road showed up on any kind of plan, and I said, "You know what? The city can do what they want. They can build the road through here, but don't take our wa, right, our wa, our right to develop our property." And we still haven't been able to develop our property through all the, even with a writ of mandamus, which I just reread and saw some of the things that, you know, they, they, they put out there before the judge that were just throwing back at them all the time. So, think twice about, you know, maybe your legal counsel, there's another side to it. We're not, I told you before, I'm not gonna fight a legal battle on the front end. I can't do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
Uh, I think some of these things that we'd be doing it anyway as part of our roadway project, as, as the Public Works Director mentioned, that, uh, you know, if we do miss, uh, if we do relocate or any property corners, we do make sure that we, uh, relocate them, reset them. Um, and we would do that for all property owners, or not only for this property owners, we would do it all property owners along the way. That's just the typical construction process that we go through. Uh, maintaining the existing culvert, once we accept this as a public property, we would be, we will have a responsibility of maintaining that culvert anyway. Maintaining the new roadway, we will have a responsibility doing that. So, those are all standard things. But there's a couple special things that have been asked here, and then that's the ones that I'm kinda scrub, struggling with it. For example, the transfer will be done in escrow at Samamish escrow. There is no escrow involved in this thing. There is no fees exchanged, and I believe the Public Works Director already contacted the escrow company. So, what I would suggest, that we will work obviously with the, Mr. McGraw to do, to the extent possible what we need to do, we would do it, well, we would do it in a way that, as the city attorney suggested, that, uh, we would be doing it for all property owners, not only for Mr. McGraw. That's our typical process to do it. Some things, I don't think we, we are going to be able to do it. Some things that, we, we do it as part of our normal construction procedures, and, and some things that we have an obligation to do it, whether or not Mr. McGraw suggests that we do it, is i.e. maintaining the road and culvert again, as I stated.
Good. Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, two points, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, one, Mr. McGraw indicated that elsewhere in the city, the city may have made payments for property. Uh, he did not mention, however, whether or not those properties had the same deed covenant that his property has. Secondly, he made reference to a writ of mandamus, which is a fancy word for an order from a court directing a government entity to do something. Uh, the city's never been engaged in litigation over this matter, so, uh, we have no knowledge of, of that. It may have been something that occurred when the property was under county jurisdiction, but, uh, not the city of Samamish.
Can I clarify that? It would be quick to clarify because he said he-
Please come, come up to the mic in 30 seconds.
The one piece of property that I was referring to that was paid for, for the transfer was on 248th. It's the exact same easement. It's the exact same recording number. It is the exact, um, same road, 248th. The other one is the, the other, the easement on 14th, the same wording in it, and it's, and so it isn't like someplace way across the city. It's actually a section of the road that the city pays their $12 in property taxes every year for at the current time. On that road, south of this section, it's south of Cetera, well, it's actually on the south end of Cetera, across the street from it. And, and then, uh, that would be one example. But be that as it may, I'm not trying to, uh, uh, hold it up over a monetary issue necessarily because that would be far too litigious and too much. And the writ of mandamus actually, that was filed, was with the city of Samamish, and I, I can actually, you know, um, I know you argued it. So, I mean, it was, uh-
Loved to see it.
Uh, yes, it was. And, uh, it was a, a letter from you that I was just rereading today to the, uh, Judge Merkel, um, and, uh, it was the city. But be that as it may, that's kind of a side issue. It's not even, that's a side issue, but the, the, the easement is specifically that easement on that road by the Van Borgending easement originally, from, from the Van Borgending property originally separated out.
Thank you. I think at this point, I would entertain a motion to place a resolution on the table.
Might see if anybody else wants to talk.
Uh, is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on it? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Whit?
Um, based on the documentation, um, shown and the information provided by staff, I am persuaded that these owners, um, acquired title subject to the easement language granted to the city- that these owners acquired title subject to the easement language granted to the city, and therefore, I'm going to be voting in favor of the resolution.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Cross.
I am going to vote for this resolution as it's drafted. I understand that there'll be a roundabout at the north end of this property acquisition constructed by others.
Can I correct that just on a technicality?
It's not a-
It's actually a traffic circle, not a roundabout. There is a difference.
Difference being?
A roundabout is like at Issaquapine Lake and Southeast 32nd, or Inglewood Hill Road and, and 216th.
Right.
Traffic circle is one of the small diameter circles that you see just in the, right in the intersection itself.
Okay.
One for traffic calming, the other one for traffic capacity reasons.
My concern is traffic calming. We have had testimony by others, as well as Mr. McGraw, about speeding that could happen or already occurs along the stretch. I'd hope that as we open it up, that we could keep an eye on it pretty carefully to see if we do have speeding problems, and potentially, if we do, then maybe we need to consider additional measures for traffic calming along the stretch. But I support the motion.
That, the issue of speeding along this stretch has prob, has been probably the biggest concern that I've heard from all of the, all of the individuals involved, whether they're for moving ahead with the interim improvement or against moving ahead with it. That's, that's been basically, I think, the biggest issue that I've heard. What we've committed to do is to monitor the speeds, do speed studies on an ongoing basis to see if we do have a speeding problem that develops. We've talked about already some options for some additional traffic calming if we should need that. That could include another traffic circle at Southeast 17th. It could include another traffic circle at Southeast 19th. So we are taking those concerns to heart. We've heard them, but we would much rather get moving forward with the project and then make sure that we have a speeding problem, a real speeding problem, as opposed to one that, that people are afraid will occur before we, before we do any additional traffic calming.
Well, that's a good point about the, the concerns about speeding, and it brought up something I think I mentioned to you, the possibility of us either retrofitting our radar trailers or acquiring a radar trailer which has a recording device to show, to record speed versus time of day, so that rather than having people monitor, a police officer out there monitoring, you can get the recorded data to either support or refute the anecdotal stories we've gotten. So maybe if you review the literature on those, the council might consider at the time acquiring one or more of those.
And, and we will do that. The other thing I might mention, since the mayor brought it up, is we also have had interest from two residents in the area to do the, the speed, the speed study, you know, with the, with the speed gun that-
Speed watch program.
Speed watch program. Thank you, Ben, to, to do the speed watch program out in this area to, to see what the speeds are and, and that kind of thing. So that's, that's a part of our neighborhood traffic management program is the speed watch, and we have had a couple of residents out there that have volunteered to do that and get involved in that, so.
Councilmember Felling.
This, this project has had kind of an interesting history that's gone on for quite a while. And of course, initially, as a private road, this was used by residents trying to find an alternative exit from, from their neighborhoods. The residents adjacent to the, to the road became concerned about the volume of traffic and also about the maintenance problems on the road, and, and then put a barrier across to make it a restricted road, but said if the city would take it over, some of them said if the city would take it over, then this would be fine, and the maintenance problem would then shift to the city. Of course, what we found is not all of the adjacent residents felt that way. I think the efforts that, you know, have, have occurred over the time, not only to ensure that, that it's a legally sound easement, but also to be sensitive to the need for alternative access for those who stated quite a bit of inconvenience and concern when it was blocked off. And then also, the, I think, a good balance of trying to do some paving that is financially reasonable and yet will be adequate for the, for the, you know, 700 cars that you had spoken to was a reasonable approach. So for that reason, I think it, it serves the greater public good to do this, and I will be voting in favor of the motion as made.
Thank you. Councilmember Huckabee.
Yes, I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion as well. I think that we've looked at this project for a number of years. I think I really appreciate the staff and the time that you've taken, the energy you've put into it. I think the deeds are very clear, and there's certainly a need for people who live east of 228th on Southeast 8th. There are thousands of people that live back there. They need some other access in and out of that neighborhood. We've received a number of emails from people who have had medical emergencies and other situations that have had difficulty getting the services they need or getting out of the neighborhood. So I would really like to see this go forward. And if you do get one of those trailers, I, I'm sure that there are hundreds of people in this community, and I know that those little Girl Scout, those little Brownies would love to see it on 212th, too.
Are we ready for the questions?
Yeah.
All those in favor of approval of the resolution for the city of Sammamish, Washington, formalizing the city's intent to request transfer of private roadway easement, that is 248th Avenue Southeast between Southeast 14th and Southeast 17 Streets, to the city for use as a public right of way and to improve this section of 248th Avenue Southeast for public use, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? By your vote of seven zero, resolution number 2009-358 is approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, our council reports. Does anybody have a council report? We'll start with Michelle.
Actually, I can't think of anyone, so I guess no.
Jack?
No report, just like to acknowledge the Eastside Fire and Rescue had their annual support dinner last week, and it was a big success, and I enjoyed going. It was well attended by the council.
Okay. Kathy?
I have two reports.
Okay.
I represent suburban cities on the Regional Transit Committee. The Regional Transit Committee oversees for the King County Council metro bus services in our community. Last year, the Transit Committee supported the council, the county council, in obtaining a performance audit of Metro, and also asked them to do a strategic and operational review of their services. Those reports are going to be coming to us this year, and they're going to be ever more critical. I think we all know of the financial situation that the state is facing. King County is facing an incredible deficit also in sales tax. Sales tax is one of the big funders of metro transit service. So this year, the Regional Transit Committee, their, our main focus is going to be on efficiencies in the service and looking at the financial situation to see if we can continue, I think the, the hope, the wish, the plan is to continue to maintain bus service as it currently is configured. And there's currently working with the legislature to see whether there's some additional funding sources that might come available to help support metro services, but it's going to be a very distinctly challenging year. Two other things we're going to be looking at also is the comprehensive plan. We all know about the six-year TIP here and the city's comprehensive plan. Well, Metro also has a comprehensive plan, and for the last two years, we've been kind of doing it piecemeal, and particularly given the financial situation, it's going to be much more critical for us to look at that comprehensive plan this year, see how all the new financial data fits into that process. So we're going to have a very robust year. And the last thing on our agenda is interoperability. If that term leaves a question in your mind, like it did in mind when I first heard it, the issue is really on a regional level, is there are a number of different bus services. There's Sound Transit, there's Snohomish, there's Metro, and at the Puget Sound Regional Council level, they're looking at how they can make, how they can move those different services toward looking at the same types of equipment. So as they move from region to region, there'll be this interoperability. It's something that's risen much more highly on our radar screen, and we'll be looking at that this year as well. So again, a very challenging and rather exciting year, especially since the chair of the committee has announced that he's going to be running for the deck, so it should be quite fun. The second announcement I have is something that came to me also from suburban cities. For those of you that don't know, we live within a King County Conservation District, and the members, the governing board of that district is charged with helping identify critical conservation needs in the district, communicating with the public, and seeking feedback about conservation programs from that district. Now, we've received funding for one program?
Yes. The Cus Creek.
That's right.
The Cus.
Okay. Well, there's going to be an election. The election is going to be March 19th, and currently, the county is soliciting people who would be interested in running for the King County Conservation District. And I'm asking the city manager if we could perhaps put this on our website. The forms are due in by March 4th, and the election will be on the 19th. So if we could get that on the website, and if people are interested, they can. It's a terrific service, and-
So they're elected at large, right? They don't represent different parts of the county? I wasn't clear on that.
Well, it looks, I'm not 100% clear on that either, but we are electing in this district, so.
Sorry.
One of the voting poll, one of the voting places will be in Issaquap.
Oh, really? That's now.
Okay, good. Councilmember Felling.
Two things briefly. One, on Eastside Fire and Rescue, we're going to, at the first meeting next month, is have a discussion, kind of presenting the financial pictures that each of the partners sees for 2009 and 2010, to get an understanding of what the pressures are for trying to meet some of the increased costs. And of course, the, the most recent one was the 7.6% increase in, in wages. So that, I think, will be a good opportunity to kind of have an exchange and get an understanding between the pressures the cities are under and the pressures that the fire districts are under that are all partners of Eastside Fire and Rescue. One of the things that came out in the discussion, which was relevant to one of the issues we've talked about before, and that is the, the notion of a regional fire authority where you'd have several entities that would be kind of blended together into one, and then their costs would be averaged together. We found that one of the fire districts that we're compared to has a cost just for fire service alone of over $3 per thousand of assessed valuation. And of course, by comparison, our city for police, fire, and all city services is just slightly over $2, and the fire portion that we have is less than 70 cents. So I think, you know, we've talked before where that kind of a combination would be greatly to the detriment of Sammamish taxpayers, and I think that's a good example to kind of get, get your teeth around to understand that. The second issue I wanted to talk about was reminded to me actually in a, an article that came out in Friday's Seattle Times, and it was talking about the re-envisioning of the Bell Red Corridor in the city of Bellevue. And one of the things that was referenced in this article was the, the notion that, to briefly quote here, that developers will be allowed to build dense, tall buildings in exchange for helping to build parks, plazas, and trails, and contributing to stream restoration. And we've talked about kind of a similar concept to help have the development cost of our town center project not be borne by, by taxpayers. It also reminded me of something that I had learned at the last National League of Cities conference that I had been intending to share earlier, but this ties in very well. There was the opportunity to take a little side tour to some cities outside of Orlando where the, the actual convention was held, and we toured out to, it was kind of a little thing we could do on, on our spare time. We toured out to the city of Winter Garden and Ocoee, and these are suburbs, if you will, outside of Orlando that hadn't been really affected by the early growth in Orlando, but then later were affected. And the city manager, who was giving us the tour, made two points that, that I jotted down because I thought they'd be helpful to us as we consider town center. First, he, he was basically saying, you know, if you could walk away with two things that are really important from their experience, these would be what they would be. He said, first, be sure you have very carefully developed good design standards, and once you've got them worked out, stick to them so that you have the quality of the project maintained. The second one he said is that the economy is really what's going to determine when things will develop. And he said, in, in the experience they had down there, they thought the growth would come much sooner based on all that was going on in Orlando with Disney World and so on, but it took years and years and years before they really felt it. But he said that the developers, when the, when the market is right, they will move in, and they will also be very supportive for trying to build the related, help fund the related infrastructure. And I think it's kind of ironic, this was not that many months ago, but the economic situation, of course, has drastically deteriorated in that time, but I thought these were good words for us as we continue forward on this project. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you. Councilmember Cross.
No report tonight.
Councilmember Whitton.
I attended last Thursday a Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting. One of the things they addressed, well, there were two things that were of note. One of them was they have to certify that plans for like the Bell Red Center, things like that, are in compliance with the Vision 2040 in the multi-county planning policies. The one that they approved, or that we recommended for approval to the board was a town that has a fair amount of low-income housing already in it, but their urban center had no parks or anything planned for it. And yet, a good part of their planning is, you know, is to put high density in there, accommodate population growth, knowing also plan for low-income affordable housing in there. And yet, they're having no parks. I mean, nothing in the immediate area to serve young families who will, at least some of them arguably live there. So it brought up a perspective that, that they're not really, and there weren't any things really close. I mean, there were some that were, would be walkable, I suppose, at least if the children were a little older. So the regional planning process does leave something to be desired, I think. What they're doing is they're predicting we'll almost double our population from 2000 through 2040, and they're planning to accommodate it by high-density housing, and yet, they're not planning for the demographics of that growth. You know, how many will be young families? How many will be single adults, older people, whoever might like to live in that type of high-density housing that may or may not have parks and other public amenities that you think of as necessary to accommodate families? So I think there will be, in the mix of things, a good role for cities like Sammamish to play, you know, being family-oriented, because they will not get that in other areas of the regional planning. So the second thing that they found was that the Vision 2040 is already out of whack with what's actually happening on the ground in several areas. They're finding that they have different categories where they want to restrain growth in the rural and encourage growth in the urban side of things, and yet, some of the six or seven categories are already at 70% of their targets. For example, on the rural side in Pierce County and something in King, there's no way they're going to stay within the guidelines of Puget Sound Regional Council because they're already there or very close to being at the maximum limit on those. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. The mayor's report's pretty brief this evening. I did attend the Suburban Cities Association PIC-
Policy Issues Committee.
Policy Issues Committee meeting last Wednesday, and gave a report on the 520 tolling implementation committee, and also a report on, on the stimulus status at that point, which we found out- which we found out more about a day or so later. But at the Suburban Cities Association was interesting, because we had a discussion about the tolling committee, and that is the three-member committee that discussed, did a report to the Legislature on options for tolling 520 or 520 and I-90, in order to raise about $1.5 to $2 billion to help pay for the replacement of the 520 bridge. And at the PIC meeting, we did a poll, to see who was in favor of what option, and actually, by the vote of 19 to 6, the PIC members were in favor of early tolling, meaning next year, tolling on both bridges, both the I-90 Bridge and the 520 Bridge. Out of the six members against it, clearly were the members from Mercer Island.
Or for reelection.
Right. I guess the reason so many people favor tolling both bridges early, it can be shown that with a relatively low toll amount on both bridges early, you can get to the $1.5 to $2 or $2.5 billion over the lifespan of the project. So, rather than hitting the 520 users with a very heavy toll, and if you have no toll on I-90, then you'll have a lot of diversion traffic going on the freeway, and create the congestion on I-90 that you don't want. So, that was interesting. Then the next day, at the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board, we got an update on the economic recovery funds, and I had estimated, from early estimates, were about $60 million coming to the Puget Sound Regional Council, the four counties here, four road projects. Later estimate came to about $80 million, and about $120 or $140 million for transit projects in the Puget Sound area. So, it's not an overwhelming amount, but it's something to be aware of, and it should dovetail into the City Manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three reports to give you tonight, and let me start with the good one. Thanks to the City Council, unanimous decision to go ahead with the Slex Sumamish Parkway Project and advertise it in this good bidding environment. We had a bid opening on February 5th. We receive a nine bids, and of those nine bids, the engineers' estimate for this project was $8.2 million. Lowest bid was received from Goodfellow Brothers Incorporated with $5.9 million, and SCI Infrastructure is the second-low bidder with $6.1 million. This is unheard of. I mean, we recently, I mean, when we advertise major projects, we were lucky to get the two or three. This pretty much indicates what the bidding environment out there, so your wisdom to go ahead and advertise this project, it yielded an almost 25 to 30% savings on the overall construction of this project. Good return for our taxpayers. Based on the Council members, I mean, Council's direction to me, I will go ahead, after do all the background checks, the word to contract, we're running into little problem glitches with the low bidder. As you know, that we have a $750,000 federal funds involved with this project. As part of the federal funding requirement, certain percentage of the project has to be done by disadvantaged business enterprises. It's called DBE requirements. For this project, requirement was set by the Fed is about the 12%. Unfortunately, low bidder showed 10%. Based on the federal guidelines, he is disqualified to be able to do this job, so. Second-low bidder show, and all the other bidders show, that today acknowledge that 12% addendum. Unfortunately, the difference between the two bids is about $137,000, but we have no option but to work to contract the second-low bidder, because the first one doesn't meet the federal guidelines for the project. We're looking forward to it. The project is going to be starting fairly soon, and we are going to do everything we can, per Council's retreat direction, to minimize the construction inconvenience for our citizens. So, that's one report. Second report I have is following up to your February 10 study session meeting regarding the Shoreline Master Plan update. You had asked staff to put together outlines of how we are going to get through the Shoreline Master Plan, and give opportunity for our citizens to provide input as we go through this process. I have a few other extra copies here, so Melanie, I'm going to give it to you. Maybe you can put one of them on the overhead, so people can see it. I'm going to go through this, and if it meets your expectation, what we would like to do is that we need a council motion to adopt this process, so we can forward, we can move forward with implementation. This is a quite different process. The Shoreline Master Plan is a very critical program of the city. It has a profound impact on a number of property owners, and rightfully so. Council actually, before the retreat, asked us that we make sure that we have sufficient opportunities for our citizens to participate in this process. I have to tell you that the Planning Commission members, some of them are here tonight, work very hard. They got any input from the technical consultants, they went through a number of public processes, and then they forwarded their recommendation. Now, obviously, it's the Council's turn. Council is going through the public input process, and perhaps Council is getting different or more messages as we go through this process. The intent with this process to make sure that we have a full opportunity for folks to participate in this thing. And let me just maybe highlight, we have scheduled 1, 2, 3, 4 study sessions, three public hearings, and then the deliberation adoption for the June 16 and June 30. So, starting February 10 till the end of June, early July, the Council will be working on this particular, critical component planning document of the city. We had a first study session February 10. Tonight, after our regular council meeting, will be the second study session. We outlined there what topics will be discussed on the each study sessions. I extend my apologies that the notice for the tonight's topics that was going to be discussed was not sent Friday, apparently. It was sent this morning, so it probably got out a little bit late. We'll make sure that we don't do that again. We'll give an advance notice to folks that what topics will be discussed on each one of those meetings, so that they will have an ample opportunity to participate in this process. April 7 subdivision and public access topics will be discussed, and April 14 imperious surface and low-impact development requirements. What we're proposing to do also, that after Council's, well, simultaneously with the Council's effort, that we have a staff outreach effort. What I mean by that is, we perhaps set up some tables here, and then invite the folks to participate in that, and multiple tables, each table equipped with the experts, consultants, and staff members, to give some background information, to answer some questions for different parts of the Shoreline Management Plan. In addition to that, we would ask the Council members to provide the City Council amendments, what we call is the Run 1, by April 17 deadline, and then we will get those amendments ready for public hearing, number 2. Public hearing number 2, so that the people or the citizens would have an opportunity to comment on those amendments as well. If I remember correctly, that when we went through this process in the Town Center Plan, this is very similar and identical process, one comment that we received was that, when the Council members proposed amendments, there was no opportunity built into the process for people to comment. So, we're revising this particular process, this current process, to reflect that particular concern. And then, I understand the Council requested perhaps add one more public hearing, is the public hearing number 3, and that's scheduled for June 2nd, and the deliberations at the same night. And then, we're looking for two meetings, June 16 and June 30 deadline, or the dates for the Council's adoption of this particular plan. Currently, excuse me, we have a deadline that we're operating under, which is the June 30. I think that we built enough bells and suspenders into system, so to speak, to get this public input. This is more comprehensive than any other planning documents that we went through. I believe that this will provide ample opportunity for our citizens to participate, to even make this planning document a better document. If this meets the Council expectation, I will need a council motion to adopt this process formally, so that I will direct the staff to fully implement this particular process.
May I have a motion to adopt, and then we can discuss?
I'll move.
Second?
Okay. Comments? Councilmember Whitton?
We don't do our best when we're drafting legislation. What I had said, asked for before, I think everything's great on this, I just, there's one final refinement I'd like on it. I'm sensing that we will probably, as a body, want at least a few changes. And I think staff, I think there should be something built into here, so when you say "Council amendments," that we should be able to, as a body, maybe give some preliminary indication, we might be interested in it, and then have staff come back to us with the language. I mean, we're not drafters, at least, most of us aren't.
Excellent comment. I think we would do what we did in Town Center, if the Council wants us to draft the actual amendment, we just need the concept, what Council wants in that particular amendment. We'll draft the amendment for you.
When you say "Council amendments," that would be basically the time that we would be asking for that to come back?
Right.
To us. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we'd like to get Council input earlier to staff.
Yes, yes, yes.
Soon as possible on these.
One of the things I want to do is draft to staff an email, just saying of the areas that I have concerns about, or questions, or comments, and that, hope that they come up for discussion in this scheduling.
Yes, and I think that, as you see it, that we really encourage for Council members continually asking those questions. What we want to do is that on amendments, we would like you to be specific as much as you can, rather than saying, "I'm concerned about this." What I would like to get from you is that, "I'd like to amend this plan in this chapter to do this," and then we'll draft the language for you to consider it, to bring it forward.
Councilmember Huckabee?
I just wanted to clarify, when we talked last week on the non-conforming uses, I think we were pretty clear in terms of identifying what changes we want. Are you now saying that we should write something else, or was our discussion last week clear enough that the staff will be able to revise that chapter in accordance with some of our discussion?
I apologize, I wasn't here last Tuesday, so I'm trying to pick up from...
We had quite a thorough discussion around the non-conforming uses, and had talked about this process of giving information to staff and having it redrafted, and we were here till 11:30 last week, discussing some of the changes that we wanted to see in the non-conforming. So, my understanding is that that piece, at least, we've given that over to staff and asked them to bring some other language back.
I'm going to ask the deputy community development director, Cameron Gurrell, is not here tonight, is not because he didn't want to be here, he's attending a different meeting. This is the Boundary Review Board meeting regarding Camden Park annexation. So, he'll be joining us later, so in the meantime, Susan is going to help us get through this. Susan, could you help me on this one, please?
Yeah, Susan Caesar, Community Development. Yeah, we did have quite a thorough discussion last week, related to non-conforming uses, and I think the staff has some homework. We have a little bit of research to do, and kind of what the bookends are, and what we can do with non-conforming uses. So, we are doing that right now, and we'll make sure to bring that information back to you as we proceed through this process, and we will probably want a little further direction, and what you want to do with that when we bring back that information for you.
Good, and that's what I thought, that that was pretty complete until the next go-round.
Yes.
And then, we also doing the city of Redmond, I understand there was quite a few references to that particular Shoreline Management Plan, Shoreline Master Plan, so we're doing the review of that particular program as well.
Good. Councilmember Felling?
Just kind of tacking on to that conversation, one of the areas of feedback that we got quite a bit on is the complexity of the document. And, you know, there's a couple of things that we might do with that. One suggestion that I had made is to have a, what I was calling kind of an English-language simple description, that would not be intended to be a complete document by any means, but would give an idea for various possible situations, what the situation would be, and then how the Shoreline Master Plan would actually impact a particular property owner. So, somebody could kind of look at it and say, "Okay, it looks like this might affect me," and then, of course, they could go and get more detailed advice. So, I think that would also help in terms of making it a more readable document. I think the analogy I was using is comparing it to how insurance policies have been changed in recent years, where they used to kind of be sort of gobbledygook, and then they wrote them in a very, very simple manner, so you could actually understand what they said.
Those folks are now writing for credit card companies.
Yeah. I think that's the clear direction we got from Council, and the staff is working on this to make sure that end product will be perhaps a much easier, readable document than what we have. We're going to at least attempt to make that happen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cross?
Generally, what I see here is reflects the conversation, the way I remember it, although my memory can be faulty. And I think it gives us a lot of opportunities to go through these. I did understand, though, from our discussion, that there would be some additional opportunities for Council members to float ideas amongst the entire Council, to see if there's enough support to warrant staff putting together, you know, draft language for consideration. I think we're, if we're listening to the public and we're listening to each other, we'll probably have other times during the discussions and after the public hearings, the various testimonies that we get, to where there will be ideas or thoughts we'd like to see in actual text for consideration. And I know a couple of the areas that I've read in here are not as clear as I'd like them to be, and some are maybe more overreaching than they necessarily need to be, and so I'm going to want the opportunity to propose some ideas, and then if there's enough Council support, obviously, maybe to have some draft language put together. We certainly would want to do that as early as possible in the process, so that the public and other Council members have an opportunity to sort of see where people are coming down on the various items.
I think that's a great idea, and perhaps, like at study session 3, it might be a time to start that process.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, is there an opportunity, perhaps, for the public to see this tonight? And maybe, we are going to have a testimony portion, maybe there, we'll get some thoughts from the public tonight on this schedule as well.
Councilmember Patidi?
My only concern with this is, what we were just talking about was, we had quite a discussion on non-conforming uses at the last meeting, and then we had some discussion about changes that we wanted in that. So, when do those come back to us to look at, so that also the public is seeing them? Because otherwise, we just kind of roll out all this stuff, we have all this discussion, but then it looks like to me, the final documentation doesn't come back until we deliberate. Is that how it works?
No, I think that the intent is that, at least, before the second public hearing, that we'll get those potential changes and amendments and everything listed out there, and it's listed, public comments, along with the public comments on our city website. So, we want to make sure that before the public hearing number 2, we'll get everything out there for citizens to see it, review it, and comment on it.
Yes, that's correct. We have a goal published date for any amendments that you give us preliminarily, of April 29th, and then that second hearing session would be May 5th, so it gives the public time to look at those actual drafted amendments and comment them on the second public hearing session.
Okay.
That seems a little late. I mean, we, Michelle's quite correct, we had quite a discussion on the non-conforming uses, and to have it come back on April 29th before the public hearing, I think you were quite correct, that it may require some further tweaking, because we threw out a lot of general information. So, that is such a critical component of it, I think it would be preferable if we saw that come back, maybe even before the staff outreach on March 23rd, because that's clearly a major issue. So, if it's possible, so that we could have it at that point in time, that we could look at it, and that the public during that outreach could look at it.
So, what you're suggesting, Kathy, perhaps, to be... So what you're suggesting, Kathy, perhaps before the public hearing number one, March 17, so we'll have that.
Those two sections.
Either the public hearing.
Those two sections?
Yeah, the two sections that we've talked about are going to come back with the changes that we would talked about, so that the public, hearing number one, the public could focus on what the discussion to date, and then by the time we get to the second one, it would be all four, right?
Yeah, actually, that's probably quite doable, Susan. I'm looking at this thing that February 17 to March 17, we have about 30 days. I know Cameron, since he's not here, so let's just load it.
Yeah, so I can have Cameron draft those up.
He's got a lot of stuff on his plate, but yes, I think that's a good idea. We can get at least those couple of critical components by March 17.
Yeah, I think that would make that public outreach much more productive. Otherwise, I'll be looking at the old language, which has been so heavily criticized.
Yeah, not a problem.
Talk about the state whack. Oh, the state whack, language on that, as Don showed me this afternoon, provides the non-conforming use provision of 75% figure, where you can't rebuild, is only if there's no other local rule, it's a default rule.
That question was asked today to Community Development Director when I was meeting with Mayor and Deputy Mayor, so he's going to check into that one and get back to us.
If that is the case, then the direction I would like to see if council would concur in is make it black and white, clear, you can rebuild if at least it's involuntary, discussion may be further involuntary. And make it clear, you then would need to consider in a further discussion of council, would you or would you not want them to have to improve native plannings in order to do that, but to mitigate somewhat the impact of that, but basically either take it out of the buffer requirement and the impervious surface limitation, but let them rebuild on the current footprint as another jurisdiction, is it Issaquah, I think, permits them to do.
I think that's, we will have our Community Development Director come back and talk about these issues. Well, all I'm asking right now for council's concurrence with the schedule and process, and appreciate your input on some of those critical components, and that's a very good one also, Nancy, what you just suggested. That same question was raised today when I was meeting with Mayor and Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Jaren was the one, let me give him credit for having actually reviewed the local, the state whack on it. Again, I'd like staff to review it and give us their advice, but.
We will.
That actually came from the citizen's email.
Yeah. Whoever that citizen, is he or she here?
It's me.
Are there any other comments with regard to this schedule? So do we have an amendment to this or simply a note that possible changes will be presented before the public hearing number one?
Yes.
I have one other thought. Do we have any fallback if we should have something come up so we don't stick to this if something happens? Just wondering, should there be built, should we have a safety margin be built in here?
I like us to build it, and if we need to revise it, then we'll come back as a council to make the revisions. But I need to plan the work activities according to the schedule.
Okay. Are we ready for the questions? All those in favor of approving this motion to adopt the SMP process as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, by your vote of 7-0, it's adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, my last report is that actually for the benefit of the council, Mayor and I'll be driving to Olympia tonight. Contrary to the deputy mayor's suggestion that we get up 3:30 in the morning and start driving to Olympia for 6:30 meeting, we'll be driving tonight.
Less traffic on the road.
At the AWC or?
We have a meeting tomorrow at 6:30 in the morning.
What makes you think this meeting will be over before 3:30?
If it goes to 11:30 like last week, you might as well just stay up.
We have no executive session. Hearing no opposition, that meeting is adjourned. Now, we will have a study session on the Shoreline Master Plan. Let's take a short break, but not a long one, because as Ben said, we have to hit the road.